Okay, I wonder how many people are gonna watch these for. Anyway, so is there any public discussion? No. So next up on the agenda is Susan's presentation. I really appreciate her coming.
Am I singing? Am I dancing? Do you want to somewhere else?
Wherever.
I don't care.
How about the, how about down there at the end? I think everybody could see the best there.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm really here just to answer any questions. I feel like a broken record, right? We've 732 or whatever we're on right now. We're lucky, right, that we live in a county where people understand how important vaccination is. They understand that it's a very low-risk, high-reward health thing. I can't, I'm losing my words today. To do, right? The, let's see, last time I looked, we were at, I'm gonna remember my numbers, eighty, eighty-two percent of people twenty-six and older, and seventy-three percent twelve and older. Those are, those are great numbers. They really are. Now, that's not everybody. We're still, that twelve to twenty-four-ish range is that area we're still trying to hide up. We're trying to do some creative things with that. I don't know much, how much you wanna know about that or not. Ellsworth has agreed to have some of these postcards. I don't know if you're hearing about them or seeing them in the community yet, but it's basically a little note for you to send to a friend or family member. I was just rehearsing in my head while I was at my kid's PT appointment when I'm gonna write on one of my good friends. I have a really good, smart friend that unfortunately got bad information and is, is going from that. And I'm gonna write her a little note and see if we can't have a conversation because Facebook ain't gonna do it, right? So that's how I'm gonna use my card. It's just a little note to kinda say, hey, I really want you to get vaccinated, and this is why. And then something we're doing in the eighteen to twenty-four-ish range with university students, fraternity and sorority life, we're having a contest with those folks to get the most vaccinated chapter. I know it seems a little weird. I bought a trophy that's about as high as I am. It's pretty cool. It's got stars. It's, it's very flashy. They seem pretty into it when I rolled it out. So, you know, I, some people laugh at these things. We were trying it, whether it gets some attention as somebody learns one other little thing to kinda push them over the edge. That's what we're doing. We think, you know, our libraries and our businesses have been super responsible. You all have. Our recommendations really haven't changed. We get movies shutting down at this point, right? We, we can't continue to do the the drive-by stuff like maybe we could before. It's great to see all your signs up about masking. I don't think I saw one person from the door to here that, that wasn't wearing one. Do I know your staff doesn't wanna get into fights about that when people, I do, and I, I'm glad I don't have to do that. That is, that does not sound fun in any, in any business space. And I'm sure you've got things worked out for it, but so I, yeah, I'm here to just to kinda give you an update and answer any questions. So before I keep babbling on anymore.
Can I ask you, your age percentage vaccination rate is that excluding undergraduates that just returned or the students that are returning, it was a long?
Age twenty-six and up. And this is why we do that. We have a hard time. Yes, they're just not quite right. So they, we're hoping they're as high as they supposedly look, but let's see, I just got from the university the other day. I wanna say sixty-four percent are in-state, which actually surprised me. It was actually, I want, I swear, when I went to school here a hundred years ago, it was more like a little closer fifty-fifty of out-of-state folks, but, so we wouldn't even have their vaccine records, right? We can't even put that up.
So we really anticipate that the overall way, if you walked on the street, now that eighty-two percent.
Right. Yeah. So overall, so when you're talking to our overall population, that's sixty percent. That includes a two-month-old and an eight-year-old and whatever else. So sixty's still okay, right? We wanna do better.
Could you just remark on the trends then, not just the position, but the trends compared to where we were seven days ago? And we anticipate to be in seven days, because I think that's relevant to what we're doing.
Yeah, so I know it's disheartening. I think this is already a couple of weeks ago. Maybe you heard at a, a public meeting, my coworker Jennifer Miller, who's a disease prevention specialist, was kinda laying the land from last year at this time and this year at this time. Unfortunately, the numbers of infections were very similar. You know, we were getting anywhere from, oh, five to fifteen a day. You know, I'd come in and, what do we got today? Thirteen, okay, you know? And now that's some days thirty-five again. And, you know, we had a forty-day and whatever. So the averages had been, oh, double digits, and now they're, you know, two-hundred-and-forty a week or something like that, I think, is what I heard them say last. So it's disheartening, right? But we're hoping even some of those people, because breakthrough cases are happening. I, I hate saying that. I hate talking about booster shots after eight months, like it kills me like it kills the rest of you, but you know, we gotta, as we learn more, then we have to figure it out and, and change our paths, but we're not in the same place. Like, it's not quite as depressing, right? Because those people that have been vaccinated, they're, they're, they're not the ones over at, in the ICU right now for the most part at, at here or any other hospital around the country, so.
And how about testing? Is it, to your knowledge, readily available or?
Yeah, it's, it's, so, you know, the state's not doing their sites anymore. You know, I'm glad we live in this county, because we had so many options for testing and, you know, not, I guess I probably shouldn't toot one place's horn more than another, but I can't help it. University of Iowa, like, you know, they were always so quick. Their results were always back so quickly. And that's what, you know, that's what my family and I chose to do every time we needed to be tested. So we do have the at-home kits. They're a spit test, so sometimes, you know, how do you get a little kid to spit that much in that tube? But also then you're not shoving something up their nose, so it's like, okay. We don't, we don't, if you're, you're sick right now or you've had an exposure, we really want you to get a test at a doctor, at a farm, you know, at a, get it at a pharmacist, someplace that's doing the, the the swab tests. We don't, we really don't recommend those for that. If you wanna travel or you've been quarantining and you wanna go spend some time with family, that might be a better use of that kind of a test. Or folks that are really having trouble getting them for whatever reason, they're certainly welcome to them, and you can get online and order them. You don't need to get that through us.
My husband was gonna go visit his elderly mother, did, and he decided he would want to get tested before he went, and they told him that he would have to pay for the test himself, and it would be a hundred and eighty dollars. Well, that kinda discourages.
Where was that at?
It's at the university.
Oh, because he wasn't actively sick?
Because he had no symptoms.
Got it. Yeah. And I think, you know, like the, I don't know if the pharmacies right now are doing more of that, a little more, what's the word? Less expensive, I guess. I don't know. That's a good question. But those are free. You could've gotten one of those sent to the house.
At home.
That's free for all I wanted. Yep. Especially in that case, that's when we would say, yeah, use one of those.
And we get it from you?
The easiest thing, I mean, if you're, if you're comfortable getting online and just ordering it through the state, that's the easiest.
I got them in one day.
Okay, really? From doing it on the, on the state website?
Yes.
Okay. Did you, did you, well, I'm gonna ask you.
No, go ahead.
Did you, how quickly did you get results?
I haven't sent in anything. It was provisional.
Cause people, yeah, people have been telling us it's take us up to like five days. Well, if you're actively sick, that's an issue, right? Which, I mean, test Iowa one of the couple of days sometimes as well, and so it, you know, I, I don't know. We're only hearing anecdotally so far what people are saying, so we'll have to keep an eye on it.
They said it was twenty-four hours from recipient, but we know that reality can often be different.
Yeah. How long does it take to them to get it from UPS? And, yeah, okay. And those are being done, you know, right here in our county too, out at the state hygienic lab. Those people are working their tails off too. I think they're kind of an unforgotten, you know, place that we need to say thank you to, too.
I have a question about benchmarks. So you've seen our hours and many other places reopening guidelines. Those feel a little outmoded now, because we're in a different place. And do you have any suggestions for benchmarks that we should be looking at, but we might not be? We had a long meeting yesterday talking about do we switch to talking about staff availability, assuming what staff may be sick and how many staff need other children? Do we watch the schools? Use indicators like percent of open schools. I mean, we, we, we love having a number. That helps us make a clean cut with them. But it feels like the percent positive which we used for the last year and a half just doesn't hold the same. It doesn't feel like the same kind of benchmark anymore.
Yeah, well, and the way Delta is surging, right? Like, it, it's just kind of a different beast. We, we really don't have a certain number. I mean, I think we all, just when you think we, like, we figured out one thing, right? Like, okay, this kinda made sense, and now we're in this land again where it's like, wait a minute, the numbers are the same. Kids are going back to school. They can't even wear a, a mask. They can, I'm sorry. We can't even require them to wear a mask. You know, they're not staying apart like they were before. It's like, and I'm not blaming the schools, do not get me wrong, but nothing's changed, especially for kids age under twelve. There, there, there's nothing that's changed, so.
The danger for the kids has changed.
It's gotten worse, just because of the contagiousness of it, for sure. But yeah, that's what's tough. So that number, it just, it always moves, and then it's what should we be measuring, you know?
Back to sort of the softer benchmarks of whether supplies will need to protect.
I do think people should, should prepare for, I just heard in the hallway in my office this morning, you know, a place that we work with, they just had somebody test positive and we're going through, well, wait a minute, what was the rule again? Like, you know, fifteen minutes, you know, if you were in here all day long, and you sat at the end of the table and I sat over here, you know, I, I might consider that a little different story in terms of, am I a close contact? We say, you know, fifteen minutes with, under six feet away, even through the course of twenty-four hours. You know, if you shared a drink with somebody, you better get tested. Like, there's, there's some caveats, but I feel like people forgot all of that. Now granted, if you're vaccinated, you wait, watch and see. You don't have to stay home. You just really watch yourself and wear that mask, which you should be doing in public now anyway. So there is a benefit in that respect for vaccinated people, but we're gonna see workplaces, we're gonna see workplaces hurting a little bit again. Yep, yep.
And I wanna revisit something that you said earlier, like, sort of like, we know we're not gonna shut down again. Do you feel like that is the message that you're giving?
You know.
Not a point that we would go back to.
Gosh, why did I say that?
The library director, they're in the point.
Yeah, no.
The board and say, hey, I'm feeling just retiring.
Well, I just said it to my own seventeen-year-old kid. I was hopeful this is his senior year. And I was hopeful, okay, we're gonna, you know, things are gonna be great this year. And I said, buddy, it would not shock me if a few weeks into this, you go virtual. So I guess be careful what you say. I forgot this was recorded. Oh, I can. You know, yeah, I, I don't know. I, I'm re, I'm, we're worried about the schools for sure. I mean, we grown-ups are doing a decent job, right, wearing our masks and not sharing the same coffee cup or whatever. I don't know. You know, I just, you feel it. I mean, I felt it in the office, and you all do too, for how long, but yeah, those kids under twelve don't have those options, so. And, I mean, you know, compromised folks and, and I, you know, a handful of other folks that can't get this for that. Like, I feel like too, again, we've just kinda shoved those people to the side and, well, sorry, we'll just stay home. Well, come on. So yes, there's more than just kids out there that, that are at a, a larger risk. You're doing all the things. I think we all have to just kinda look around when we see things happening, whether that is in, in larger businesses or schools, and go, oh, do we need to, do we need to talk again? Do we need to re-figure this out?
I have heard of some businesses, small ones, that shut down, because, like a restaurant, because the staff is sick.
Oh, yeah.
So they shut down. I mean, if the library staff isn't getting sick, then you put the onus on the public to make the decision about whether or not they, they want to come in. I don't, I don't know.
Well, the big difference there too is, right, with vaccinated folks, you're, you know, half your staff doesn't have to stay home that we're in that close contact or whatever. They're, you know, waiting and watching themselves, because the likelihood is less that they're going to, to get infected, and even less that they're gonna get super sick, so. I know, not what anybody wants. I get it. But again, this is a more hopeful time. This isn't a year ago, where we have tools. People need to use them, but we have the tools.
I just wanna make sure that, so if I have a staff member that calls me and says, my husband tested positive, that they are vaccinated, they can still come to work.
Yep. Yep. They, I, we don't want them, we call it like hyper, like be hyper vigilant about any symptoms. Would I go visit my nursing home, you know, aunt or something? Probably not until those fourteen days were up. If I had a scratchy throat or my, you know, just any little thing, like, mm, I'm not gonna say that's allergies. I'm not gonna say it's a cold. I'm not gonna say I'm gonna keep my buns at home. So that's the kind of the difference, just super hyper, hyper vigilant about it.
Do you have any opinions about deciding? We do a lot of outreach and we do a lot of program with the library, and a lot of that program is for youth who are required to wear masks if they're under two, but we know they're also not vaccinated. We're having a, it's, it's a complex decision to make about whether we let the community decide, and if we have staff who feel confident and comfortable doing those programs in person, well, that's the right thing to do. And the same thing goes for outreach, which often involves more population, children, seniors, people like that. Do you give any comments or any guidance about how we would?
Yeah.
How we would help make that decision?
I do. This is the one thing, I'm glad you brought it up, so that I didn't forget. My coworkers would be upset with me. They said, this is the one thing you should talk about. Why do I say this? You wanna mitigate what you can mitigate, right? I get that you wanna get people together, right, and that these programs are important, or we wouldn't have them in the first place. But you need to think about the amount of people in the room, masking or not, their ages, and how big that room is. Did I already say how long they're gonna be there? I think I did. Oh, boy. Just, you know, you have to have the whole package, and then decide if it's worth it. And now that, can I give you an opinion on? Oh. I mean, I think we've all personally had to do that for a lot of different reasons, but then, yeah, on the business or the organizational side, how key is it to, like, how much do those people need that service or need that activity or event? It's different, a little different when it's outside. It is.
So do you make recommendations, no eating and drinking in these programs?
That's best. Yeah, the minute you take off that mask, yeah. That is a one easy thing to kinda cross off the list that we would recommend. Yes.
Rob and I didn't hear your comment. I said, would you recommend no eating and drinking?
Okay.
When people take mass breaks? If you set people congregating together on masks?
Is the county tracking vaccinated individuals that do positive?
Good question. I've been asking that too. So I'm always the person that wants to put out more, more, more information and more numbers all the time. And how do I say this? Somebody's tracking it. I don't know that we have it in a form that somebody can dig through it and that I can, as a communications person, then like say, here's our number. But it is something that we're following closely and that I'm pushing us to, to put that out, just because I, yeah, I, I think a lot of people wanna know that. I really do. And then, but then also, how many of those are asymptomatic? How many of those people just had a headache for two days or how, you know, so then it, you have to have all these qualifiers, or people are like, oh, no, everybody that was vaccinated's got COVID, which isn't the case either. So it's hard to paint the story accurately, and we're trying to figure that out.
I just seen New York had been releasing figures of rising, still wait, I mean, yes, not in hospitals, or not reinfecting, but then it is going up, which I guess for operational first for you, sort of like, you still have it, you can't come in.
Right.
So staffing.
Good point. Yep.
You're still safe, but.
Right. Yes.
Not for your family, are you safe?
Yeah.
I do think there's still a little bit of a feeling on the building that comes with the vaccine for some people, but I mean, it was a real turning point for some staff to say like, well, no, now I can be the person programming. I'm vaccinated, I'll wear a mask, and we definitely pay attention to the breakout cases and the variants. It's, I want them to feel confident and safe and protected, but there's that line of, but you're also still at risk.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like that part either. I, I'm very confident and comfortable knowing that, you know, if I get this now where that wasn't the case before, that I, I wasn't gonna end up at the U. So that, that makes me feel better, but I still don't, I don't wanna be the person that pass that on at work, you know? And, and hopefully we won't. We're doing great with masks too, but it, it can happen.
I have a question. I'm gonna, I'm gonna phrase this as narrowly as I can. I know that at a state government level, they've done their level-headed best to prevent any type of requirement around the vaccine. They're trying to prevent that actively. So from your experience thus far, maybe even this week, since the FDA approved Pfizer fully, is your experience with it thus far that that's effectively a non-starter in the state of Iowa? And I know that that's a really loaded question, but and it's okay if you would rather not answer.
As, I mean, I mean, private, private places can still do what they want, right? So I do think you'll see a movement like we have around the country of people requiring it. And not just in healthcare, I think in other businesses. Those of us that work in government, I don't see any hope for that, but that's my personal opinion based on
Okay.
what you've all watched, has heard and read as well as I have.
Okay. I know where my head's at and what I understand it to be, but I wouldn't.
Yeah, yeah. And there's, you know, vaccines are required in schools. Heck, I'm, I'm required as part of my job in public health, because I, I, part of my job too used to be doing some HIV testing as well, so I was handling blood, so I had to have what is it, hepatitis A, B? No, what is it? Also, is it shame on me? Ten, ten? TB. TB, I had to get TB tested however so often or whatever. So, you know, there's already stuff that we have to, have to do and have to have, and I know that people have, for whatever reason, have a hard time seeing this differently, but those requirements already exist in certain places, so.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for you. It isn't, but the sewage testing that we're doing, so we're coming from two dorms and not the entire campus or two dorms, is that, or they're only doing two dorms to sample? Is that true?
I don't know anything about that yet. I mean, I just, I probably just heard, like you heard. Um, you know, and what is it, at Des Moines?
At Des Moines, double the sewage rates.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember hearing.
They went up in two weeks to double.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I just wondered what the, the science was behind testing only two dorms and that.
No idea.
Um, you know, a site that's got more than just defined results and.
Yeah, I did some logistic thing, that it just, that's what works easier for them. Who knows? But I wonder when they'll have that out. Yeah.
Other questions from the board or the staff?
I wish per usual, you know, I could say this is exactly what everybody should do, and we know some of those things, and you all do those things. Past that, I understand the, the spot that individuals and families and organizations are under, and I don't envy being on those, these kinds of boards and school boards and, right, all the decision-making bodies. I don't envy any of you, and we know you're all doing the best you can.
Your feedback throughout the process will really help. I appreciate it. I'm sure we'll have more questions.
Yeah, anytime. And let me know how this postcard thing goes. I'll try to get you, if, if you run out and people are using them, I encourage you all to at least look at one before you leave, and hopefully, unlike me, you don't have a very good friend that is still a holdout, and you don't need to send them a card, but you could try it, because being nasty doesn't, it, I, I've tried it. I'm not embarrassed to admit it. It, it doesn't work.
Wish you did.
Oh, if, if I knew it did, man, I would just be barking orders at everybody. Doesn't work in my house either, so. Okay, everybody take care.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, good to see you in person.
I gave this slim, but I think we have a quorum now.
Yep.
It's a whole new world that I'm in.
I'm staying very near.
A few people, but anyway. Um, I think for the next item on the agenda, which is to review the fourth quarter statistics and financials, maybe Derek, you could pass those things around, the updated ones.
That's actually where we're at it. The document was in the book that we were doing. The numbers were added, there were just two complex columns that you were looking at the third quarter and in the month, no, nine months of the book. But the, the numbers that were there were.
Oh, yeah, I just passed them around. Oh, it's all good.
There's so many left over.
I know.
Jeez. Well, you wanna go through these?
Do you know if people have any specific questions? I went through them. I felt like they were I think the curves are what we've been doing all year. I don't think there's anything on here that's gonna be shocking. Obviously, the, the big turnarounds are things that we just hadn't been doing until right now. Some of that, like some of the tool we've been with daycare numbers and things like that, you'll see ever show a return, but otherwise, I think this is probably what more to what we're expected to come into the end of the year. Unfortunately, I'm not counting it, was continuing to correct because of some of the pulling back on outreach. We're covering the but the distance.
Can I ask you a question? Can you give us, or indicate any measurements that are totally different from the patterns you've seen with other libraries in Iowa? Are there any outline numbers that are different than the general patterns we're seeing throughout the state? Is there anything distinct about it? Because I think a lobby, they just, the curse of the term operation. Is there anything that's?
Yeah, I wish the, the story would be known, but the longer it would be, some libraries or library districts, like, committed at the beginning, we will be doing X through COVID. And so their number of daycare permits may not have varied as much, but I think most of us have had sort of the holistic, like, we're gonna do the service of weekend safely. Um, I think that this is, this is gonna be a slower curve. And then, you know, many, many of the smaller libraries just had to stop doing, I mean, many of their numbers would be zero for most of the year. We're really getting a chance to see that in more detail after the state federal report is done. I think this is gonna be a fascinating year for that. We did just get that document. I would prove this is gonna take two months, so we should have a decent year-over-year comparison, but that will speak a little bit more directly.
Here's your second question then. Is there a possibility that it's dropped in usage numbers? Will threaten any of our funding and stay? Or will they be interpreted as a blip?
I think they'll be interpreted as a blip. And I would feel differently if COVID had been lethal or just for the, for the building failure or something. It's because everybody's gonna have those probably similar ratios. I can't imagine that we moved against our single state.
I'm just thinking of the arguments you hear at times that libraries are becoming antiquated and not understanding the range of our services. I think this will be data that could support that argument if misinterpreted.
It's, it's dangerous data for sure. I mean, especially when we move forward and people might forget what they were doing. The state library has not dropped forward any even A L A hasn't, I think, really touched that yet, but they, they might. I don't stand, might know more about.
We are expecting additional funding for IMLS, and some states will get double boost, and the R would be encouraged to support.
Well, that's the other side of it. Other things, but maybe it's a to promote investment.
I think one thing we have to watch carefully is how the digital versus print. How those regulate, because they're, they're, I'm gonna say correctly, when we're voting, more than I thought they would. I thought we might have see those digital numbers continue to climb, and people are more comfortable and into their pattern, but it's been a little bit more swim back than I, I. seen those digital numbers continue to climb with people that are more comfortable and into that pattern, but it's been a little bit more swim back than I, I anticipated. So it'll be curious to see moving forward because if it doesn't, we don't sort of continue a little bit how it was, we may be looking to be repurchasing print copies of things that last year that the demand was digital.
Right, right.
Could, could save that last bit just a little bit.
I could see that.
That, that was my number one thought was, are we doing everything we can to make sure that people are comfortable and continuing to use the digital service? And can we continue to drive those numbers and improve them? And I was disappointed that they tailed off a lot. And I wondered why that was happening.
Well, my digital use is probably down like 90%. So I can start borrowing.
I'm part of that number two. I did it when I thought it was safer. And then once I learned that really probably wasn't a matter of much, I I went back to kind of the hard copies, but it, we'll, we'll have to see how it settles. It's a little too early, I think, to start making changes. Luckily, there are some really great tools that I collect with department users to, to keep a close track on that, to really be able to go back historically and say, these are the reasons why we bought this number of copies of this format versus this. This is how we evaluate whether this company was created and when. So it's, it's a great, great place to have, to be watching, because the statistics are so closely kept. But I agree with what you're saying there. I think we have an opportunity to to push, you know, the, reminding people.
Further education. Acclimate. That's kind of what I'm thinking is, you know, folks out of desperation jumped there. And then when they felt comfortable coming back to a library, they said, well, that was complicated. I'm not gonna do that. And I love holding a book. And we need to get people to say, you know, that online service is every bit as good as a book. Somewhere in the, the stuff I read this week, you said that the digital is more expensive.
Or more expensive.
But if the user, usership is high and if the turnaround time, you know, people are finishing their digital version more quickly than the physical version.
I don't think they do though.
No?
I think it.
Then, then we get our money's worth.
But I think there, there are still multiple types of purchase where some digital purchases can only circulate a certain number of times and then they go we have to repurchase. Some are forever and however many. Like there's a somewhat, we just buy that we have kind of.
That's becoming less and less of a thing. Yeah, publishers have moved over to that needed access if they make more money.
And they could argue that if you buy a print, you know, that was forever. It gets used to get damaged, but then you buy it again.
Like a fight in the.
It's a great thing to read about. It's a great topic to read on.
I think you, I think your point was well taken. We should remember to keep promoting the digital collections. What's the same thing that we did during the shutdown.
I do think that you can't overlook the, well, for me, it's a thrill of coming into the library and browsing the shelves. And, you know, for, to get a digital book, I'm gonna need to basically know what book it is that, that I want. Whereas, you know, if I come into the library, I'm likely to leave with four or five or six books. Not gonna do that with digital book. I mean, it's just a, it's just a completely different experience. So it doesn't really surprise me that once the library opened up, all of a sudden, you know, the print formatted is more popular because.
Browsing is, is very difficult to reproduce.
And it's, it's fun. I mean, who doesn't love to go into a bookstore, even in the airport? That's the best part of being in an airport. Finding a bookstore for heaven's sake. So that's my two cents worth.
This year we will be, us kind of recalibrating and rebalancing that we're not sure relative to like. There's also issues with accessibility for materials. They're like, do not have access to the internet. So we have to ensure that we have the same breadth and depth of the function that is allowed.
I'm just concerned that we're going to get back to a place where people are too scared to come in and browse the shelves.
No, no, my kids aren't scared, but and they're not scared of digital either. So.
We'll just, we'll just.
The thing I'm curious about is have you noticed any movement from publishers in the way of access and making access to these digital materials more equitable, considering COVID? I'm sorry, it's just, I, I'll be blunt. It's offensive.
It's a for-profit model.
You're right.
It's a private for, for profit model. It's not a humanistic nonprofit service.
Right, right.
I totally agree with you, but I also look at their model and they like.
Really appreciate your practice.
We have a right not to buy from them.
I mean, part of the irony of that situation is often the digital ebooks and others have so many amazing accessibility features for people with disabilities. As small as dyslexia or needing to have a larger font, I mean, there's such an amazing array of this kind of default built-in accessibility features. And then to have the class, the essentially the new version of the digital.
To me, it's like, it's like putting a, a, a book about mobility issues at the top of a stairwell. It doesn't make any sense.
There were a couple of examples, just for recording. There was a couple of examples of publishers providing either free services or better access to things. Ancestry is an example. Ancestry was a resource that you were only allowed to use in pounds during pandemic. And right now, we continue to. Through two, three, oh, through this year. Yeah. They offered it offsite. So people could see that. Overdrive offered a variety of deep classics, which were all in the public domain.
Right. But it's not nothing. You're right.
Okay. Are there other questions about the circulation statistics?
Some of the numbers are kind of surprising, but the total circulation is down 15%, which doesn't seem until that.
Painful.
Painful, yeah.
I think it could have been a lot worse. It could have been a lot worse, you know, for the programming you did. The pickup services and.
As an organization, don't view that as, as a net negative. I think it, it, the reason, like you said, it's not worse. It's effort.
Okay, so let's move on then to the expenditures of the financial reports. I didn't know, so I asked and we need, the board should accept this report or not accept this report. So we will take, take motion to accept it after we if there are questions or elsewhere, if you wanted to point things out about. You wrote a report, right?
Deep into the packet, is it?
It's after the circulation. And he wrote budget items of yours.
So when I looked at this budget report, at somebody pretty open, open with it, it sort of felt like, what do you talk about when everything is done? But the number, so feeling was wide balanced. And what, what I was hoping to convey with the memo was and a sort of if I would want anyone to have the impression that, that was like unintentional spending. We track their spending incredibly closely. So every time that we expended from the mail line, that it was overspent, we knew that. So we were making those decisions consciously. And, and we then tried to balance, okay, so for overspending here, we, what, where do we pull back? So I pulled out mail, that one, we talked about a lot at this table, so that, I'm beginning wanting to be surprised there. Just going through those savings on the things that we deemed unsafe for our staff. So we weren't sending people to training offsite, things like that. Pointing out that the collections budget, which appears to be overspent, again, that was unintentional. That's a reflection of an $8,000 reduction that we just put there by final months. And we, we chose to overspend above it elsewhere. I, I don't think it's a surprise that anybody was including PPE lines. And then showing a little bit ripple effect from format changes, what folks were leaving. I'm surprised how much I got while we were closed with sort of like a like a elbow in the ribs of like, you know, you must be saving a lot having that building closed. No, we're not saving anything. We, we're building full of paper. You can't turn the heat of the air conditioning off. We have to keep it at a regular humidity level, temperature. So, but it might be something to credit to see that we all respect some of those facility lines. We talked to Brad quite a bit about Brad, your facilities head, about why those lines look weird. And he said, it's just a combination of, we had some real cold days, we had some really hot days. We also were using an atypically open part of the building for curbside. So for the building to, you know, to shove that even cooling into the essentially stairwell that we were using to give out to the vehicles, that took a little extra energy. And similarly, for like the heat curtains in the lobby to function, which makes a very key part of our overall interact system. When we were doing lobby based services, there were times when those doors were open almost all the time. So it's sort of those, those, those pieces of that up there, up to every cost. But again, because we are so able to track and we spend, we, you know, we didn't, it's not that we got to the end of the year and thought, oh, what a surprise. It's, we're over. We, we've known that since the, you know, the beginning of winter, the week before. And obviously recognizing, one of the reasons we had so much flexibility throughout the rest of the budget was the cost savings of having a follow. That's would not be something we choose. That wasn't the intention of the follow, but having that, that particular line on the spend the way it was, allowed us to, to take on some other kinds of service work. And I, I think looking at this budget overall, I think it's a pretty fair reflection of how the year went. You know, we had plans, some worked, some didn't. We have new ideas on the way. And we also were wanting to be very conscious of, of being a team player. So when there was an opportunity not to spread another line, instead of finding something unnecessary or frivolous to, you know, burn that line out on, we chose to, to not do so and end the year with a higher balance than we typically would have. I'm hoping that next year we'll start to look a little more traditional. We will see what happens with the pandemic. And I think this year gave us a nice blueprint. If we do go into any kind of similar service changes or building closure, we hope not that happens. But now instead of going into they also have a curbside, we have no idea how that would affect the budget. We have a pretty good idea. So we'd be able to future fast those costs and that schedule as we put a lot more activity. And I, I wanted to give a lot of credit to the leadership team for taking, coming into this year, we had an extremely traditional budget. And I look at the energy department that was able to convert what we had planned to spend on outside presenters and large programs and turn that into take home craft kits and things like that. And just the amount of labor and material that went into some of those different creative approaches helped us continue to save the money without overextending the resources of the plan. So the group is doing an exceptional. Yeah, we're happy to answer questions. I know it's kind of like, where do you start?
Robin had a question. First of all, I ask, who's this report going to? Will it be going to the city? Or is it only an internal report to the board of trustees?
I mean, the council will see what the matter, when they see the word.
The reason I ask is I think some of the, I you might want to reconsider, like, I don't think these are over and underspending. They are reallocations or redesignations. Over and underspending sounds like it was not a purposeful decision. And I think also when talking about facility use, I had questions about facilities until you spoke just now about the fact that we opened a large area for outside pickup. I think there's a sentence of those details and how the facility, facility was used differently. Because you speak of the fact that buildings are operating, we start electricity. But the reality is we opened different doors and we used it differently in order to make the accommodations for patrons. So it's more of a purposeful budget use than just saying, because I, I think when you first read this, it sounds like, ah, we're over, we're under. It's like, no, this was an active decision by the leadership group to adjust services.
Okay.
And that, that kind of makes sense. So it doesn't sound like, it sounds like you're still
deliberate.
And it's being driven by a service model.
And I, I actually thought about what you're saying and said over underspending because in my budget experience, you say reallocation would be actually reallocated the subjects in the general line.
Yeah, but you kind of moved things. You reallocated from one line to another because you had the money and you need, had a greater need.
I think that's a good idea. It would be a simple change. I could just edit it.
Or at least it definitely is to go public in any way. That it.
Yeah, we do this.
Internally, I mean, we all know what you're saying, but.
But I, I never wanted to give you a perfect, yeah, footprint spending or not.
Right, right. No, right. And, and when I hear you speak of it, it's a very different feeling to me, at least that these were active decisions to re-prioritize the use of some of the. I'm seeing like when Teddy has to use this for donors, or we have to use it for the state council. We want to frame what they hear. Right, right. It's actually, it's a positive thing.
Yeah.
Other comments? So I, I don't think that we need to approve Ellsworth's introduction. I think we need to accept the reported financials for the fourth quarter. If somebody could make a motion to do that.
Seconded.
Do I get to vote? Then we don't have a quorum.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a voting quorum. All right. All in favor? As opposed?
Hey, one more question. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit slow. And if, on your salary savings, was that partially because of, is part of that also due to retirement of very senior staff members? And we might say that we had this long tenure of staff that retired in a cluster which adjusted our salary structure overall. Does that make sense? It's just, I think everyone in Iowa City knows that we've lost that tournament. But those people have been here their entire careers, our different salary structure, the people entering those positions, so adjust that line up with the numbers that we have.
Okay. Moving on to the end of year report for fiscal twenty, fiscal year 21. Are there comments or questions or? I think it's pretty much the same, right? Just the fourth quarter. So.
Different time.
Strategic planning update that I think there's, did everybody get a copy? There's been some discussion about have taking a look at the strategic plan updates quarterly rather than every six months. And Ellsworth didn't seem to indicate that that would be a lot of extra work because the leadership team is always working. because the leadership team is always working with the strategic plan in, you know, in mind. So if the board would appreciate that, I mean, I personally think it's a good, it's a good thing. It's sort of easier for me to remember the goals over three months than six. So with your permission, I think I'll ask that we do this quarterly rather than.
I think that on many of the goal objectives we it's not typical year, but I think that we've made the progress. Some of them really do tend to be able to interact with groups of people, which we were hoping to do in person. Through the community, through feedback groups, things like that. If we get too far forward into this year, it doesn't look like it's a possibility, we'll probably shift that version and try to do it virtually. But we really, some of the potentially less people we were hoping to be able to include in really in public face. And yeah, we try to sort of be, give as clear of an update as possible, but we're happy to answer anything about specific items or requirements.
I just had a question, not, not that it's under goal lines, objective to it. It said, our ID had installed an info desk. Does that mean you can check things out? Know what that means? Upstairs?
We're still doing training for that, so we're, you know. Those who know how to do it will just sort of tackle it as it comes up.
Okay.
Downstairs to fix a problem on the job.
We also have to self check right there really often. So if the staff person isn't trained on using the module on the desk.
Okay. What comments? Just going off here, there's a lot of progress. Well, hopefully this is our last surge and to get through this spell, we'll be able to really get going. The comments? So then the next one is the policy review for the circulation and library card policy. And I believe that's just one voting to approve what the board already decided. Change. Are there, are there others? People reviewed these policies, this policy. Are there others? Comments? I don't believe there were any other changes made.
The only thing I, as I was reading through this, I'm wondering, why would I ever think of calling a library if my wallet was stolen? I'd be calling my credit card company. I'd be calling my, I never would have thought of calling a library. My wallet was stolen. So, you know, the idea that I would be responsible for material borrowed from my foster stolen library card, I was dumbfounded by that, you know. One thing I thought is if my wallet's stolen and I come to the library and get a new library card, does it automatically disable my prayer card? Yes, good.
So that's someone who had it happen. It wasn't so I was lost in, like, one of the first things I thought about was chances I lost in the library.
I had the unique experience of losing my wallet in the library. And the library staff was amazing. And you wouldn't believe the cameras in this place. They're everywhere. Go cardless.
The last thing I would have done was call the library if my wallet was stolen. Absolutely the last, I was dumbfounded when I was reading that.
For you, I think.
Yeah, I know. My keys. Most of us are cardless, yeah. That's my phone.
Yes, can we have a motion then to approve these, this policy as presented in the report? All in favor?
Voting on behalf of John.
Knew there was something around another table. And that is.
We had a lot of discussions on the frozen concept of this and the best intentions, they've just been a long question. All my remark relates to.
Okay, so moving on to staff reports.
I, I'm sure I did, I always think to, because I'm saying it's about superpowers, but I think it's important to to have a record of the attention and work we're trying to do around staff morale and COVID. That aside from the theme of life, certain virus, one of the things we talk about the most is how do we keep staff engaged? How do we keep the elderly up to do this public service work? Especially when, when there's the oscillation of masking and not masking and those things that happened with our whole lot of advanced donors. So one of the things, it's not a misreport, but as we think about our training and learning curriculum for the year, which have been still enhanced by the support of the nobility, it's been a cruise of this for supporting, but really we are going to put some very intentional effort into rebuilding the morale, the connections. Make stuff back to, you know, like this is, this is where they want to be. Despite COVID, library, library workers, where the heart is, and I'm trying to get back to, to a better level of that. I'm not saying that, you know, people are crawling off the street in misery, but, but there is a topical difference. I think that the stress, the fatigue is just a real deal. But we've got some ideas. We're, we continue to do small but sort of impactful stages of, you know, when it's safe for eating pizza or celebrating, you know, things. I mean, even just those small things, I think have an impact. And we're, we're always to see what happens with the mask mandate. We're going to hold on to it while we have it. And if it goes away, we will reevaluate. And here's a big one, the board annual report update. After last month's meeting where we had quite a bit of back and forth about how we wanted to work this document, I wasn't going to verify that it was no longer needed by the city. And Carol and I talked, and we agreed that there's really no reason to finish it as it stands. Instead, let's put that interview into creating a new format for the board to have. Anyway, we're reporting that actually speaks to to, to a few levels of aspiration. So I'm sure that'll be great idea about that, but for the moment, we are, we were putting that document to bed. I think that's a positive because going back to a previous packet years, it's, it always will be a little bit. Otherwise, just sort of the general updates, we did decide to put forward the board a discussion dinner after sort of disappointing exploration of what was available within walking distance. Many more places to recharge a minimum to use the space or, or surprisingly high rental fee. Like thousand dollars, like things that, that as an outside group who probably aren't the best fit for. So we're going to let it go a little while longer. We're still going to be doing it. But we want to make sure we're finding somewhere that reflects good stewardship and lets us take the safety precautions. And I appreciate the strategic plan conversation earlier. We'll go ahead and do that. Questions about the report or anything else that happened?
Has there been pushback in the last week since Mayor T's mask mandate?
Not much. I would say I've heard of a small handful, maybe under five patrons that argued about it. We, we have a lot of masks down on the floor. So I think when people come in, they're kind of on the fence. I think that alone sometimes spurs them to like give up and put it on. But I haven't, I haven't been called to be on the, to think, I don't know how many things have elevated to a coordinator level, but I was, I was shocked that there wasn't more pushback. I mean, I wasn't prepared to have a special meeting. I was prepared to think about security options. I, I really thought it was going to be a hardship.
Well, we were being targeted apparently when we relaxed them last time. And so apparently that's not happening.
I mean, I don't know if it's the manager has bigger teeth than I expected. But I will say the, the half measure of before the mandate, when we were saying we are requiring them, but we also are kicking you out, but we won't serve you. Seemed to, to work pretty well. I think staff were pretty comfortable with it. And I think it did resonate with patrons because we received a pattern of refusal. That's fine, I'll go do my stuff. And then sort of secretly putting one on when they need help with the printer or something like that. And I didn't, we're never attempting to shame or guilt people. It's just, this is our baseline defense that we have against a pandemic. And I mean, withholding that service is the only leverage that we have to get people to, to onboard with it. So, but I, I think it, I felt more comfortable with that in practice than I maybe anticipated. So if the mandate does go away, I can imagine I'll do something.
Other comments? Okay, departmental reports, children's.
The book festival we do for children in the fall is apt to go virtual.
Which one?
It's a, it's the one book or the, it's the women, the children.
February?
Oh, it's in February. Okay, I've got that mixed up with the rights one. Okay.
I'm not sure what.
No one can see February.
There is one in the fall.
That's what I'm saying, the one book, two books. Right, right.
And it's half hybrid, moving more to.
More hybrid?
Now made it to almost thirty two thousand books for one hundred and twenty five thousand. So please keep adding those in. We have, and if you haven't completed the summer reading, it goes until September first. We have a lot of adult books, a lot of children's books, and for kids and the young ones. Read the ten books to get your free book because we have a lot to get myself, so.
Still got the sweet.
Just trying to get Hannah to get all the books on virtual.
When it's virtual, you don't, or when it's an ebook, you don't know how big it is when you check it out. So I've been checking out gigantic books.
I'd show a little embarrassed way.
I got four, man, I'm sorry.
I just listened to a forty nine hour audiobook.
Oh, my God. Oh, man.
Now I'm listening to a twenty nine hour audio.
We have recommendations of stuff. You save those for contracts.
Or prison.
I do nineteen hours on weekend and then it finishes. And I was listening to it on one point seven.
Well, you tried speaking it up. Could easily be ten books.
He's falling asleep and having to do it over.
That's right. You could put in each chapter. There you go.
I would tell parents for every one of those, there's go dog go.
Message received.
Hundred and twenty five thousand books. So I'm going to know, I mentioned we have the one twenty five birthday bash that you'll probably talk about in years.
Well, it certainly is not the same in the summer during a pandemic. I mean, because it just was so crazy in here typically in the summer.
It's very, very slow. Kids back in school.
Can't wait to have a.
Between eleven and four o'clock.
Okay, collections.
A little bit about this.
I love the little dot of this for year twenty two.
Well. Okay. And IT.
I had someone ask me about the app situation, saying the app is really difficult. We're accessing things now because you can't just pick it up in the general, like going to an app place, download it. And they can't find the site on the library website and what you download it. Is there something we can do just to make it a little more visible? Two reasons. And maybe it was someone who's just challenged. I'm thinking if someone brings up saying, I used to use the app, but when you updated it, it no longer was available. There was new improved to a point that's not accessible.
Maybe they're looking for it in the app.
Right, where we used to get it and stuff. And like now it's, it's just like one more step or something that.
Well, I had never downloaded the app before. Before this, shoot, sorry, it would be any of us. Before the, before you announced it on the website that it was new and improved. I, I really like it, but I hadn't, hadn't done it before, so.
I'm seeing some people, for some reason, they're not finding it as easily as they do. And it could just be, you know, the outlier who says something. So it could be that you don't want to generalize it, but it's.
I mean, I think generally it's much easier.
Why they get into it. It works nicely because now you can see that when your holds are expiring and stuff, which was always a challenge in the past. I downloaded it, yeah.
Because it can be browser dependent.
Yeah.
Safari or Chrome or some other thing that should go or something on your phone. But that first time, you might need staff intervention, but otherwise it's.
Okay. And Patty, your report.
I too would be happy to answer questions about, it is great to have local volunteers back for a few hours every day. I'm sure you'll be able to join us at this point. We're still a go for September twelfth. It will be lots of fun.
So it'll be mostly outside, I assume?
I, I think so. The band will, I'm not sure, what, Sam's kind of more. I think so. At the end, we'll, I'm not sure. Sam's kind of working on that part, whether they'll be on the stage or what. They'll be outside. Okay.
They'll go to the outside.
They preferred that when I asked.
Play in the patio or how would they set up?
There's a stage at the end. Okay, sorry, because the stage closed to the river. Yeah. Sorry, I said the boat won't be all the outside. Don't worry inside.
It's a brewery.
Let's hope for good weather. It's not ninety five with ninety five percent humidity. Seventy two with the breeze off the river. It doesn't smell bad.
What my favorite venue. I'll see there.
Can you even imagine Iowa City, what it was like before Big Grove? It's like, it's so many things are, are there now, you know, they're held there. And it's like the only place to go to lunch on a Monday. Everything else is closed.
Sunday brunch.
Except right now, the kitchen staff isn't working on Monday. So try it this month.
Okay. All right, miscellaneous. I'm not quite sure what that is. Anybody want to, oh, is that the, the articles, communications, I guess? Is that what that is? No, that's later on. I don't know what miscellaneous is. Okay, my report, I didn't, don't really have anything. I'm constant here, but I appreciate his taking over last, last month. Quite a way to start being president to be gone. Also, I appreciate Ellsworth and Kelly doing some of the legwork to figure out where we could possibly hold the board recognition dinner. It, it's just really complicated. And then when, you know, when, when the numbers started going up, we did talk and it just didn't seem, didn't seem at all fun to sit around with masks on while we have a dinner. Makes it hard to eat as well. Continuing education, we've all known that, you know, we're supposed to be paying attention to some effort to enhance our understanding of what it means to be a board member, member. And Kelly's been very good about sending things out. One board person suggested that possibly there's like short takes for boards. And that possibly that are like ten minutes, possibly maybe every second or third meeting, we could, we could do that as a board during the meeting. I have to confess that I have tried and tried and tried and tried and I cannot access them. So I'll be getting with you because I don't want to recommend that we watch them without actually watching them first, just to make sure they're not terrible.
They're, they're not terrible. They're, they're a little outdated, but they're not terrible. I, I did review them before sending them off, so.
So that's.
It might be considered.
If you, yeah, I would obviously open to other suggestions for continuing education. One wonderful way is to take part in the Staff in Service Day, which I don't know what your plans are for this year, but they're incredibly good and incredibly informative. So I would suggest this. If you have the time that you consider taking advantage of that. And that's really all I have to say. Announcements from members. A few of you that there are here. No. Committee reports that has, no. And the communications are the articles in your packet. And then there's the consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. All in favor? And then looking at the agenda for next month. Looks like we have some policy reviews. So I assume there's going to be more to the circulation and library card policy. Okay. Okay, I thought that was a little bit too easy. Anyway, so everybody remember to go to Big Grove on the twelfth. And with that, unless somebody has an objection, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Big enough? Do you feel comfortable? Do you want to reevaluate that about other spaces in the library? I can't promise they're available, but if this after practice was too small, especially if you can hear more people short, this is a good time to.
You could always. So there was some confusion about this quorum, how only people who are particularly here are all members of Timothy now.
Okay, I'm going to have Kelly explain that. But the two part thing, can you explain the quorum?
Yes. Your quorum standard is addressing my loss.